Good evening. This is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its regular zoning commission public hearing and administrative work session on Wednesday, October 23rd at 6:00 PM. The quorum for this meeting is four, and I will now call the following elected commissioners. Zone one Commissioner Linda Manos.
Here.
Zone two Commissioner Ewal Joseph.
Here.
Zone three Commissioner, myself, Harold Watson, here. Zone four Commissioner Deborah Lamberty.
Here.
And zone five Commissioner Len Petricelli.
Here.
Our alternate in attendance this evening is Rich Verdat. We also welcome Jay Abansky, our Planning and Zoning Administrator. Gail DeCilio, please, a round of applause, she's back. Our recording secretary, we missed you. Patricia Sullivan, our zoning legal counsel. The public may only speak at the invitation of the Chair during both the administrative and the public hearings. With that said, I call to order this regular public hearing and administrative session of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, well, five zero, okay. We're now going to move on to the public hearing. The Stratford Zoning Commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised at this session. I wish to announce that should any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated, the public hearing may conclude at 10:00 PM and be continued to another date which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 10 o'clock tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on October 9th and October 16th. Ms. Lamberty, will you read the first petition? Well, actually, we're going to take both petitions together. We'll vote separately, but we're going to do them both together. When you come up, please, give us your name, but also give us your card, your neighbor cards if you have not turned them into zoning. Deborah, we have to read and open. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Text amendment, petition of Peter Harvey seeking to add a new section 7.1.19 to allow for the sale, storage, service, and display of boats in a CA zone. 326 Ferry Boulevard, petition of Peter Harvey seeking special case approval to allow for the sale, storage, service, and display of boats in a CA zone.
Gentlemen, please introduce yourself with your name and town.
Yes, good evening. My name is Attorney Peter Harvey. I'm from Orange. I represent the contract purchasers of 326 Ferry Boulevard. I filed these applications tonight. To my right stands John Brown, who is the contract purchaser of 326 Ferry Boulevard.
I don't know, does that my board?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
I think somebody stood the rest of you. So, in this little corner, feel free to hold it. Okay, thanks. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry, can everyone hear me now? Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Attorney Peter Harvey. I'm from Orange. I filed this application on behalf of the contract purchasers of 326 Ferry Boulevard, who is John Brown, who stands to my right. As preliminary matter, let me hand in the notice of mailings for these applications. Sure, can I insert my text? As the Chair has noted, this is a combination application. We are first requesting that the zoning regulations be changed to permit the sale, storage, display, and service of boats to be conducted in a CA district which is not yet permitted pursuant to a special case exception. And our second application is to be granted the right to do that at our specific location, 326 Ferry Boulevard, as a special case. Reviewing the general tenor of the staff notes, they seem to indicate a sort of tension between the desired future development of Ferry Boulevard and some present realities. The ultimate aim appears to be to make it greener, more pedestrian-friendly, and somewhat more residential. I don't see that my client's business will impede that. We're only relocating an existing business that has existed on the street for three decades, a few hundred yards further up the street. My client's activities are entirely consistent with the town's plans, aim to protect and encourage water-dependent uses, and to support commercial boating services and facilities. I should point out that my client already issues most of the boat ramp permits in the town, so they are certainly a valuable business in that regard. The location in question, 326 Ferry Boulevard, presents challenges for any sort of alternative development. While Raymark remediation efforts have been concluded, we still await the final restrictions on the property from the EPA. What we do know at this point is that the soil below four feet remains contaminated. And my clients, who are only going to utilize the surface of the property and not going to do any construction, would seem to be one of the few businesses who can make immediate use of the property. At present, we have a property which has essentially been abandoned, may soon become an eyesore, so we're talking about immediately improving the complexion of the community both economically and aesthetically. We plan on remodeling the existing building to improve its appearance and to better conform to the desired appearance of the general neighborhood. Surrounding property values, we believe, can only be enhanced. As to the specific concerns listed in the comments, all work on boats will be performed within the temporary structures proposed. Dust is contained by vacuum systems, waste oil by a double-wall structure, and runoff will be contained by pads that will be drained. If you have any questions specifically about that, my client can answer them. My clients have been operating on the street for many years and have never had a single complaint from any of their neighbors with regard to the way they conduct their business. While we can't entirely conceal boats from the upper story of high-rises that surround the property, my clients are perfectly happy to put coverings over the fence that conceals the back part of the property where all the service and repairs will be performed. And they stand ready to remodel the property in any way that the commission might deem necessary in order, again, to bring it within conformity of the plan's objectives. As essentially a high-end retail enterprise, traffic will be considerably less than the restaurant location that was presently there on the property. And of course, since we're essentially moving an existing business, there should be no increase in traffic at all because whatever traffic there was would be going to the new location. As to the concern there may be two boat service locations on Ferry Boulevard as a result of this approval, honestly, we can't speak to that. Our entire business will be relocated from 230 to 326 with the commission's approval. What the owner of 230 does with the property thereafter is totally up to him. We can't speculate. All we can say is that there will be a single business that we conduct, and that, if approval is granted, will be at 326. The business has never generated safety concerns, and the entire property is easily accessible to police and emergency vehicles. In conclusion, we believe that this has been a valuable business for many years. Our clients, at this point in their development, think it's essential that they own the property in which their business is conducted. They certainly don't want to leave Stratford. They have deep, deep roots here, but they really feel at this point they need to own a piece of property, which is why what's impelling them to make this application and to make this move. We thank the commission for its consideration.
No, I'm here for questions, so, you know, read my notes, and if you want to take a couple of minutes to read them better, then I could answer any questions for you. I'm well-prepared.
So, your notes are the topic dated October 14th?
Yes, yep.
Commissioners, would you like to make any comments? Thank you.
You know, this isn't a CA zone, and we're really, you know, some of these businesses have, that are in CA zones, have been grandfathered in, but it's supposed to be mixed-use, you know? And that's a big property that could be, you know, well-used for mixed-use.
We understand that. We don't really know what else could go on this property besides a business like us right now. And we've been on this street for close to 25 years and feel that we fit in, and we feel that we could fit in just a couple buildings down. And I don't know what else, you know, could be done with this property because of the property restrictions, so that if we don't go there, I think it's going to sit vacant for a lot of years yet. And I don't know what kind of ideas the town of Stratford could have for this property. I've never even heard of another good idea.
If I may, I think the person who can address this most helpfully is Attorney Robert Rosati. He represents the present owners and has been involved for quite some period of time in looking for prospective buyers. I think he could add something to the conversation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Curtin. How's everybody tonight? Sorry, I'm a little informal tonight. Yes, my name is Robert Rosati. I'm an attorney here in Stratford at 3241 Main Street. I represent the longtime record owners and operators of this property, the Augustin family. As I think everybody knows, they ran the Blue Goose forever. They, about 10 years back, leased it out to owners, and unfortunately, the plan was for those owners to purchase the property after renting for a period of time, but unfortunately, COVID changed all that. The Augustins as landlords and the operator as tenants did everything in their power to keep this thing going as the Blue Goose, but COVID knocked it out of the box. And since COVID, we've been trying to market this property and find the right owner. And tonight, I'd like to represent and let you guys know, they are the right and only owner as far as we're concerned. The first thing everyone needs to understand is the back of the property, it's a separate parcel that's going to be combined into the front parcel. That has been involved, I think you know, very extensively with the EPA and with the Raymark cleanup. The cleanup is completed, reports are being finalized, but the big thing is a land-use restriction is being recorded in connection with that cleanup by the EPA with DEEP's approval. And the land-use restriction is going to restrict residential use of the property. So, forget about mixed-use, unfortunately. Forget about apartments. And quite frankly, we were tied up and got the runaround from apartment developers who wanted to acquire this property. It just, it doesn't work. It doesn't work for our, my client. It wouldn't work ultimately for the developers. It wouldn't work for the town. It wouldn't work for the neighbors. And I give my clients a lot of credit. They made a decision where maybe they could have made more money to forego all that and go with their neighbor who has the right use for this property. And that's why we're in contract with them, and that's why they're here before you guys today. The restaurant failed, so the next best thing is an operator right down the street who has a proven track record in what works on Ferry Boulevard. So, yeah, the plan for mixed-use is a great idea, but it's not feasible on this property because of all the challenges. So, that's why we're here, that's why we're under contract with the Browns. So, I think we need to focus on the fact that the property doesn't lend itself for the mixed-use and the ideas that the town might have for this, but it does lend itself, and it is consistent with the other uses up and down Ferry Boulevard, which aren't going away. Nobody's getting rid of the used car lots. Nobody's getting rid of the Browns' use and the other marine uses and boat sale uses. Nobody's getting rid of the gas station. So, this is an opportunity to take, unfortunately, a broken-down piece of property and clean it up and plug guys from the town who have a proven track record, who are going to clean up this property, they're going to agree to whatever stipulations for screening and aesthetics that you guys want to put on this. This is not going to open up the floodgates for any other CA districts in the town because Attorney Harvey craft, very craftily wrote the regulation to say, it's got to come for special case. So, if you don't see that another application doesn't fit the special case criteria, it's not going to open up floodgates in other CA districts. This is the right use for this property. It is consistent with the special case criteria. It's certainly going to fit into the Ferry Boulevard neighborhood. It's apartments, mixed-use, doesn't work on this property. And imagine the roomful of opposition we would have tonight if someone was coming in with that. We specifically stared away from that type of application. So, I think all the comments, and Attorney Harvey addressed them, I think you got to focus on the comments, I believe they're from Mr. Abansky, regarding waterfront development and climate resiliency. There's three items that he, that are pointed out that are consistent with the POCD objective. Ensuring existing redevelopment is consistent with waterfront vision, ensuring planning, use, and maintenance of public waterfront areas and facilities will be consistent with natural and traditional character of the waterfront, support a variety of public commercial boating service facilities, including boating, docking, mooring, launching facilities, et cetera. The bottom line, Ferry Boulevard is as close to the waterfront as we're going to get without being directly on the waterfront. It lends itself to this marine-type use. My clients have been sitting patiently. We're up against EPA and DEP. They've done a wonderful job, and they've been working with us, but it's taken forever. We're 90% of the way there, finally. We urge you to grant this. These guys are the right users for this property. Thank you.
Yes, Ewal.
Mr. Chairman, I have, I guess I may be confused. You said, no, he said, this property is not, is not suitable for any other kind of building except what you propose, the storage. And at one point, you said, it's cleaned up? If it's cleaned up, why can't we build anything else on it?
Because it's not.
He said it's cleaned up.
The remediation is not total. It doesn't remove the total contamination. It's remediated as far as EPA is concerned to their standards, but go down four feet on that property, and the soil is still totally contaminated. So, any sort of heavy construction would be great, would render great difficulties and great environmental problems.
Robert Rosati, again. The EPA has cleaned up the Raymark, but there, I just want to make it very, very clear, there is a land-use restriction that's going to be recorded on the land records for the back portion of the property, which is the larger part of the property, that restricts residential use. So, that knocks out mixed-use for the property, sir. I just want to make sure everybody knows that, okay?
Okay.
And it's cleaned up as far as the EPA can clean it up. And where they leave off, they record the land-use restriction.
Jay, if this is approved, the other, where they currently are would still be zoned?
Yes.
Both facility, correct?
That's correct. The use doesn't travel with the property owner. It stays as a special permit. It stays with the land.
Do we have any short plan, the city, for that piece of property? They don't, no short plan?
So, those are private, they're all, where the applicant currently resides or has their business in their proposed location are all privately owned? So, what proposals are out there from the private sector, we don't, I don't know of any.
Okay.
I wish I had all my documents handy right now, but I'll discover them in a little bit. I'm most concerned about development on Ferry Boulevard in that it is key to our Todd District, our transit-oriented district. It also is key to our coastal resiliency planning that we're doing for Stratford. We've been working on this now for seven years. And you might not be aware of all of this, but there is plan to increase the elevation on your side of the property, or the site of this property, with a greenway that actually is planned to run down that site. The state is very much supportive of this happening as we redevelop our vision for what Ferry Boulevard will be. One of the things that we're really being insistent upon is that we increase the ability for a mix on commercial land of both housing and commerce. And we have stuck with our guns on two of the properties that have gotten built there already. And I, my assumption is, and I can't tell you, I have to go back and research it, is that both of these apartment buildings are built on land that is no better off than the land that you currently possess. So, I don't know that we can say, I can understand how the area to the right of the gravelled area is really marshland. I assume that DEP could not remove all of that soil, even if they capped it with gravel. I don't know what is upland of that in where the current restaurant area is and parking lot area is, but I think we would be not fulfilling our plan of conservation and development without asking the kind of questions that would ask you to reconsider the idea of putting in housing and commercial into the existing, what is consisting, the Blue Goose area right I also understand that if you continue your boat area in the back, it's essentially a gravelled area, which is good in terms of the permeability, which is what we're looking for all along there, the ability for our floodwaters, because that area does flood. I'm sure you're very aware of this, and there's no reason to think that it won't continue to flood. But I looked at your plot plan you have, and you're showing two tents, but then in your written piece, you're saying that these are temporary, that they're only there until you build buildings. We approved this year another coastal marina area, boat storage and boat repair. Actually, we did two within the last year and a half. Both of them were required to keep all boats indoors. So, we felt that was good for the aesthetics of the town, but also good for the ability to control pollution, be that dust or be that, you know, grindings into the soil. So, also, I don't feel that we would give up that requirement really easily, that would something we might really want to hear more about in this, in terms of this proposal. So, I love businesses that have been around for years, and I think that's part of our responsibility also is to make sure that we can try to find a way to accommodate both. But what, I'm speaking personally, I'm not speaking for the committee, but I'm speaking personally in that it seems to me that you need to go back and think about this, looking at our plan of conservation and development. Because if you look at the drawings that have been done of the roadways and all of that, it's a very different vision. You are describing something that's basically commercial-industrial or marine-industrial, but the town's vision is very different. The town, you're less than a quarter of a mile from the train station, so it's a perfect place for the town to put in housing. And I don't think that we should quickly give it away, give that away without having a much more serious discussion about it.
Mr. Chairman, Robert Rosati again. I would tend to agree to most of that, but for the fact that there's, the EPA is restricting this property from residential use.
So, you're, the whole property, front to back?
The rear portion is going to be subject to a land restriction, the total, and one of the conditions is the whole property has to be combined into one piece. So, the greater portion of this property is going to be restricted to residential use. And it all but knocks out the feasibility, the economic feasibility, to put one or two units on the front piece. It's, the other residential developments, apartments on Ferry Boulevard are not subject to residential land-use restrictions. This property is, and that is the whole purpose of this buyer, this user of the property. We can't do, sir, what you're, you want us to do and what the vision of the plan is. It would be nice, but the EPA is restricting this property from residential use.
Jay, do we know that to be factual?
Well, I do know that there's an environmental land restriction on the rear portion of the property. It doesn't indicate here on the survey that was submitted, the exact parameter, you know, sometimes they'll show that crosshatch. You know, if you look at the parcel, you can see that where the front building is, road, building, and you have the existing property line here with an accessway, it's like a flag lot towards the rear. And so, I would say that the applicant is correct. I would agree that a majority of the rear, when we're thinking at the two, of the two parcels separate as they sit today, and if they were to be combined, a majority of the land is part, has the land-use restriction. I can't tell you with any certainty what portion of that is based on the map that we have here. So, maybe, I mean, I guess part of the question is, well, does the land-use restriction apply to the parcel, part of the parcel that does not have the contamination on it, or was not remediated? That I don't, I don't have that answer.
I have to clarify some things. My understanding from EPA is no work was done on the front parcel because it was considered to be effectively encapsulated by a park.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Peter.
My understanding was that no work was done on the front parcel by EPA simply because the hard surface was considered, it was considered encapsulated. So, it does have contamination underneath it, but they didn't have to do any remediation because you already had the parking lot.
All I can say is, one of the conditions of, with the EPA, is for us, after we, we're hopefully going to get this approval, it has to be combined into one piece, and then the land restriction is going to be recorded on that entire piece. And then the land use restriction is going to be recorded on that entire piece. I haven't seen the final draft, so, like Attorney Bantsky, I'm not sure where it falls. But it, it's going to take up the majority of, of the parcel, because the, the back piece is the larger piece. I, I'd have it here today, but the EPA, it, it's not completed.
And so, to answer your question, Commissioner Petroselli, you know, it's, it's not uncommon for it to have, let's just say, to make it easy, a, a 20-acre parcel, and the rear 10 acres has a land use restriction, nothing can be built on it, but the, but the, a portion of the part, property can be developed. I do not know if that is the case in this instance. I, I just can't tell you that. All I can tell you is how land use restrictions work, they don't always have to apply to the, the property in its entirety. It can be a portion of it.
Thank you.
And do we know what portion is that?
I would, I would estimate that the, the property is about two, between two and a half and three acres. I would say that close to two of the acres are going to be subject to this land use restriction. And again, I, I would have something here if the EPA had it completed.
And so, just so for the commission's understanding, the rear parcel appears to be 1.7 acres, and the, the smaller parcel up front with the structure, permanent structure on it, is, is .76, so about three quarters of an acre. So, the rear parcel, one and three quarters roughly, the front parcel is three quarters. What portion of that 1.7 acres of the rear has the land use restriction on it? I, I don't see, it doesn't indicate that on the map, unless I'm missing it, so.
Mr. Watson, I respectfully argue with you, well, not argue with you, but just point out, your, your vision and the town's vision of having mixed use or housing on this property, it, it makes it absolutely economically unfeasible, because of the amount of land that's going to be subject to this land use restriction.
Well, we heard, we heard back from Economic Development, and one of the comments that they made was, that they're concerned that having a commercial, even if it's marine business, having a commercial business in an area that we're trying to make more residential, that you have properties that have just been built across the street from you, which if you put in a boat, a boat repair yard, all those people are going to be looking down into your boat repair yard. So, that's one of the things they're concerned about.
I don't see anybody here in opposition, and it's, either that, they're going to be looking at an overgrown, blighted property, Mr. Fredette's not going to be happy with either, because there's, the, this is the, this is the, the appropriate use for this property, because of the challenges it has. It's their job to make it as pretty as they can, so everybody can come to a compromise.
And as noted previously, we have a large fence at the rear of the front parcel, and we would certainly be willing to cover that to make, to conceal the activities, the work activities and storage activities in the back. And obviously, to comply with any other recommendations the commission makes with regard to aesthetically improving.
Well, maybe you can answer me, I know it's, it's not on your drawing, but what are you talking about? If you have, currently have two tents for repair, what kind of a building, and, and it says in your written description that this is temporary until you can construct facilities. So, what do you envision constructing on this gravelled area?
Just a solid sheet.
Yeah, like a steel building.
Just, rather than anything canvas, at some point, we might consider putting up something that is actually metal and more durable than they.
And are you reading the guidelines of the, the DEP, that that is doable?
Yes.
So, you would be able to put a concrete plat, platform in there and construct a?
Yeah, Jim at the EPA has said we can do that.
But he's not saying that for the front of the property?
We don't, we're going to use, utilize the restaurant right now and make that completely marine-related, so that stays.
Okay, let me ask you an obvious question. Are you using this existing building because you don't want to pour a new foundation and approach upon the, whatever's below the cap, or the current?
I think that's fair, we'd like to go the route of least resistance, if we don't have to do, look for permissions that might impact us adversely environmentally, we certainly would like to work with what we got.
Okay. Yes, Deborah?
I'm concerned about Ferry Creek as well. I see it in the inset, but I don't see it on your larger drawing. Now, that was cleaned up, and, you know, at, at great expense, and how are we going to prevent that from getting recontaminated?
You mean by the activities of, of my client?
Yes.
All right, what did I, what did you just draw?
Yeah, so, I think in, yeah, number six explains that very well. The dust is contained by vacuum systems that we currently use. The waste oil is contained in double-wall structures. The runoff, any runoff from boat bottom cleaning is contained in a pad that then gets pumped out. So, there's no runoff into the creek that's nearby. And I could answer any further questions.
Do you want to make any final comments, and then I'm going to open it up to the floor?
I'm all set, I'm, I'm here for, you know, any more questions.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to be redundant, just very briefly, the way we've drafted this is, as a special case exception, as I think Attorney Rosati said, and as I've said, you retain control, control over whether this sort of use on other locations would be appropriate. We understand what the future goals are, but there are real, present, practical problems with any sort of alternative use of this property. We can use it tomorrow and save a property from becoming blighted. A dream that this may someday look different, how many years are you prepared to live with a blighted property before that happens, if ever, given the environmental concerns? I would urge the commission most strongly to approve our application.
Again, Robert Rosati, I just want to point out, the, there, it's not like up and down Ferry Boulevard, it's all apartments. It's, the majority of the uses there are auto dealers, boat storage, gas stations. It's, it's a commercial use, which more recently, there's, there's two or three apartment buildings. So, the, 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 the plan of development in trying to make these mixed-use properties, they're not going to chase away all those uses. Those uses have been there forever, and they're going to be there forever. So, if this property is restricted from residential use, then why don't we just give a proven user in the area who, there's, there's a market for them. There's the Long Island Sound, and, and, and the Husatonic River, it's a boating community. Why not give them this approval with is, with conditions that are reasonable, that they can meet, to just make this a, a tremendous piece of property, as opposed to a rundown, closed-up restaurant? I think that's the best compromise, guys. Thank you.
If not, I'm going to.
Yeah, I have, I don't have questions, I have cons, I have a couple of concerns. I'm concerned that the planning commission wasn't in favor of it.
Okay.
Not, not that we necessarily always listen to them, but it was 5-0. Our Economic Development Director is not in favor of it. And do we know for a fact we can't put apartments there?
We don't know. And the, what I think the bottom line is right now, what we're looking at as a zoning commission, is that the proposed use is currently prohibited in a CA, CA mixed-use zone. So, what they're asking us to do is to give another special zoning, which is, having worked all year long on rewriting our zoning regulations, to try to end up cleaning up a lot of that mess in our current zoning, we need to be very careful about saying, are we willing to give another special, when we're going to be voting on our new zoning in a month? Do you, do you know what I mean? Part of the, what we're trying to do is to make consistency with what we do have as our zoning. I think, in fairness to you, you have to deal with the DEP. So, eventually, that's going to be the reality that both of us have to deal with. But I do not want us to give up our responsibilities right now, in terms of what, where the town is projecting itself 10 and 20 years from now. So, I, I, Lenny, your comments are critical, I read those very carefully. In looking at Jay's notes, I see that there are consistencies and inconsistencies that, for why we would want to do this. But the other thing that I will mention is, five years ago, we did not have the exiting traffic off 95 going on to Ferry Boulevard. And so, consequently, that street is seen a lot more by anybody coming through Stratford. So, it behooves us to have some kind of a front door that is, that looks the way we would like our town to be, even if it's not where it is right now. So, I, I think, in my considerations, that will weigh heavily. But I also think that we don't have to say yea or nay to this right now. What we can all, all really do is give you more time to work with the DEP, and the DOT, and the town economic planning people, and see what could be done. Theoretically, you could put a two-story building on top of the current restaurant there, and end up with housing, which would meet, come closer to our goal of creating a, the vision of more, there are other options that you could consider. So, I, that being said, I want to open it up now for, for, for and against. Please, when you come up, give your name and your address. First, I want to hear from anybody who's in favor of the project. Please step up.
Hi, everyone, I know a few of you are ready, can you hear me? I'm Joe Vernuccio, I live at 239 Husatonic Avenue.
Did you spell your last name?
Vernuccio, 239 Husatonic Ave, do you want me to spell it?
It's spelled by your last name.
V E R N U C C I O. You're welcome. So, the back of our property, and my neighbors, face the back of 2, 326 Ferry Boulevard. After speaking with my neighbors at length, we're not opposed to this project, and we're not opposed to, we are not opposed to the zoning change. We've also heard very good things about the owner and his current business. The reason I'm here is to tell you a little background about this, the property. So, Jim DiLorenzo, who is from the EPA and the project manager of Raymark Project, that's currently going on, gave a presentation, and he gave his word to the community that the property would be remediated and replanted. Of course, that never happened. And then when we forced, we spoke to him later, he said, the current owner does not want it replanted. So, that was all left open. We felt a little let, let down about that, but currently, this project, this property is, as you know, under contract for approximately $1,800,000. So, accordingly, I asked for myself and my neighbors, who I've spoken to, considering the price tag would be a small investment, if you do grant it, that we'd like the property to be fenced in an appropriate way for the residential neighborhood, maybe green fencing, and possibly green tree, or trees round the back, as you said, not seeing boats there. So, that, that's basically what we're, we're hoping for. And finally, I do want to mention to the commission, so if you guys don't, aren't as familiar with the property, so, even though it's been excavated to avoid flooding, I can tell you, on multiple occasions in the spring, the property is so wet, my back property, which abuts to this property, is so wet, I can't even let dogs down there. That stays for weeks and weeks. Also, it's important to note that during Hurricane Sandy, the storm surge that came up from Ferry, the Ferry Creek, all the way on Broad Street, where Outbreakers is, all the way from Broad Street, completely obliterated that with water. It was at midnight, I had lawn furniture there, it was floating. So, if you have a storm surge, and we know with extreme weather and hurricanes today, that's a very good possibility for that area, my neighbor next door can no longer plant anything in that area, because it was destroyed by the storm surge. So, I wanted to make that clear to you, and that property is not easily accessible from Ferry Boulevard either. And it's also not, it's not very flat property, or very usable property. So, we do hope, if you do approve it, that the owners will consider beautification of the, of the, the parameters, but as a rule, we do approve of it. It would be very difficult to put housing in that back area. If anybody wants to come to my home, you're welcome to look at the property, and you would see, it would be unfeasible, for the reasons I mentioned, and for the reasons because it's so remote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Then I'm going to move on. Anybody here to speak in opposition to the project?
My, excuse me, my name is Thomas Legensky, L E G E N S K Y. I've lived on 120 Willow Avenue over 50 years, and my, my whole life in Stratford. And the only thing that bothers me is, during the cleanup, when they were cleaning up the boat sales places, they brought in all these boats to store on the, on the rocks and stuff. And I wouldn't want to see that, would, you know, because, because my property goes back 150 feet. I'm at the end, I'm at the corner of, of where the, where the cleanup is. You know, you know, the, where, where the rocks go back. And I, I don't want to, I looked at those boats, and, and, another time, they brought in maybe 100 cars, you know, you know, just, just so they could clean up the, the, the properties down, down the road. And then they eventually brought the boats back, once the properties were cleaned up, and, and that was that. But I didn't know that so much of this property, I thought the 326 is the address? I thought it was just going to be that one parcel, about three quarters of an acre, not the back parcel. Am I, am I right in, am I right or wrong in that thinking?
Yeah, I mean, just to clarify, I think it's, the entire parcel wants to be used.
The entire?
Two parcels, the entire two parcels.
Over two acres?
Well, well, I'm not for the back parcel to be used, then, because, because I don't want to hear motor boats being, you know, fixed and started and putting in the, and, 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 and all that smoke from the motor boats and all that. You know, you know, in, in my viewpoint, before it was cleaned up, it was fine. I worked at Ray Bestis in the research department from 1972 till 82, when I got laid off. And then I went to Seco. And then I went to Sikorsky. And to be honest, across the street from that property used to be a small tool shop called Fleet Tool. And there is so much sludge in there. It's probably 10 feet thick in that property. It's kind of across the street from the cleaning, where they clean clothes and the EPA has stuff stored in there, in maybe an area there. But I could never understand why that portion was never cleaned because there is so much sludge in there because this is where they were putting the sludge before they closed down, truckloads and truckloads. And the sludge that they took out of where, in the place they cleaned up, when I moved to my property in 72, that whole area was orange. You know, from the sludge. It was piles, it was piles from the dump trucks. And then Ray Bestis would come in, grade it down, and put maybe six inches of topsoil on. That's why there was so much growth in there from the topsoil. And also, I can remember, you know, I can remember when I was going to Stratford High before they built, where the Army Corps of Engineers is now, Ray Bestis built this, I mean, not built, but they made a big, big mound, maybe 30 feet high, and it was of sludge. And people would go there, townspeople would go to this pile and use it as dead soil to make patios. I saw that. I know this. But so getting back to the, I don't want to see boats. When I'm sitting at the top of my property, I don't want to be looking at boats and people working on boats and all this crap. You know, I went through over a year of listening to the noise to get that fixed. In my opinion, it should be a park. It should be covered with topsoil and make a park out of it.
Thank you. Harold, rebuttal, I guess?
Excuse me?
Is there anybody else who wanted to speak in opposition? If not, I will now give you a rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, in keeping with the suggestion that the chair made, we'd ask that the hearing be kept open so that we can explore some alternatives with regard to plans and also hopefully obtain some definitive opinion from EPA, which may have some bearing on your final decision.
Mr. Chairman, might I make a suggestion for the applicant? So the plans, one of the recommendations that we gave prior to this application being submitted was, if you're standing across the street, what are we looking at? Is it just looking at the blue goose with a new sign? Are there boats being stored out front? Are there new boats? Are they boats that are shrink wrapped that are stored from somewhere else in town? Is it every square inch covered in boats? The plans just don't show. And we don't need to know there's 110 boats. It's, what does it look like from the front? What are the stalls? How many boats are you? I think that would make it easier for the commission to understand what is actually happening there, what they would be looking at, maybe the residents too. Just a suggestion to provide some modified plan, amended plan.
And if you can also comment, because we didn't even get to it in terms of questioning, you can also comment on how are you getting boats in and out? Is everything coming in on a flatbed? Are they 40-foot boats? Are they 30-foot? Do you know what I mean? If you could give us some indication of that. Because what we're concerned about is, looking at the vision, what, how can we make both of those compatible uses? In order for us to say, yes, we will give up, we'll allow another use in CA which is not allowed right now, remember, we're not only going to have to accept yours, but we're going to have to accept whoever's the leasie on the property that you're currently on. So no matter what we're doing, you're asking us to have three properties on this road when we've been working to reinvest in that area. I mean, granted, it's your property, but in terms of... The other thing I could suggest to you, go and look at, on the planning zoning site is a coastal resiliency document that has what the FEMA and everybody else are talking about, what we should do to the site. How should we make it more climate protective? What should we be doing for all of that land? Go take a look at what they're suggesting. Because if you can show us how you can increase the compatibility of what you want to do with what we know we have to do to keep Stratford from becoming a marsh again, then that actually might be a good sales point for us.
Jay, do we have to? So the applicant has requested that you keep the hearing open so that they can submit more documents into the record. And then I would then distribute those to you all if they have some more information to help you all make your decision. Is that, that's what I'm hearing, correct?
That's correct.
So just a motion to continue the hearing?
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Because that's where a lot of my questions were that I haven't gone through tonight.
Can I hear a motion?
Yes, motion that we keep the public portion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, sorry. Here, here, I think there are only the original there. Okay, so we now need a motion to open our--
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to open the administrative session. Yes.
Motion to open administrative session. Did you make the motion?
No, you did, just then. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go to our first point. It's to vote on the items, which we already did. Discussion. Oh, that's right, because it's still open. Okay. All right, so then, could you please take that into the hall? We're still, we still have a whole agenda to deal with. Excuse me. Please take it in the hallway. We're still working. Thank you, okay. Approval of the minutes, Debra, for September 25th and September 30th?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Oh, go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. Shall we, let's discuss it, shall we? Okay. Administrative site plan reviews, Jay? I did both together. Yeah, can I do that? Okay, we're going to do the second one separate. We're going to approve the minutes of September 30th, our special meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Aye, five, zero. Okay, administrative site plan review, Jay?
No, nothing.
No CAM?
Nothing.
No accessory apartment applications?
No.
No sediment and erosion control applications? No zoning enforcement?
No.
Other items, zoning regulations, update project. Listen carefully. Discuss final comments on proposed changes and instruct staff to submit formal adoption application. Jay, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to take this time to see if any of the commission had any further comments after having some time to review the very, very, very thick document that I've been lucky enough to read about 100 times at this point. And I've even done another review and found some typographical errors and things that I need to change even since our last time meeting. And so what I wanted to say is, if you have more comments, we would like to hear them tonight so that we can decide whether or not those need to be discussed. And if there are no more comments tonight, then you and you all feel comfortable with where we're at right now, you can give me the permission to put together the formal application to adopt the regulations. I'm going to lay out the schedule for you right now. If you give me the, if you instruct me to prepare those documents, we will then send out all the state statute required referrals. We have to send it to the OPM at the state of Connecticut, I believe. We have to send them to the regional planning agency, to DEEP, to all of our neighboring municipalities so they can review to make sure there aren't going to be any negative impacts on them. There shouldn't be, we paid special attention to that. And then it'll be referred to the planning commission, who will then give us a formal recommendation for the document's consistency with the plan of conservation and development. Because those referrals take 35 days and the way the schedules work this month and Thanksgiving, we don't have 35 days between now and our next meeting. So what we would do is, I would put it on the agenda for November 13th. You all could open the public hearing. You all could discuss it. I think that would be a good opportunity to let the public comment on it, really spend a lot of time, if there's a lot of folks here, let them comment, listen. Keep the public hearing open in case we get any comments on our referrals and then hopefully adopt at our December meeting on December 11th. So, you know, it could take a little longer. You know, I don't, we don't know what will happen. So that's what I'm kind of hoping for this evening.
Jay, how, oh, go ahead.
How are we going to handle when we go through all the regulations if there's certain sections we don't all agree on?
Well, I think that's part of what the last meeting that we had was, you know, you discuss them. And so there's, you get to consensus. And so it says, you know, if there's, we want 10-story buildings in the center of town. Some of you do, some of you don't. You discuss it and then someone makes a motion to say, all right, I want a motion. And then it either passes or fails.
So we can take individual sections that there's a problem with? I mean, it's not going to be a lot.
I mean, you could. I personally think I would prefer to have a work session where you all did make those determinations ahead of time. That way, at the public hearing, it's kind of going over the project, introducing it to maybe some people that might be hearing it for the first time. And so that we're not making too many text amendments and changing words are very difficult to do on the fly. And so if I had a preference, it would be done in another special work session. If you all wanted to discuss a few items to change or to get consensus on, my recommendation is that we do that in an administrative work session like this so that when the application is formal, you're really just reading into the record, planning commission said that their agreement has already been made on what you're adopting and what you don't want. So that's my recommendation. Not to say something may not come up at the public hearing that you heard from maybe an audience member, oh, I never thought of that, we should make the change. I think we want to reduce as many of those changes as we can and have all that consensus done beforehand. So.
If I can also suggest, if you go through to find out what the things you actually cannot live with, if you identify one or two things like that, I know you do, so that's what I'm saying. I'm specifically looking at you, Lenny. Then it makes it manageable for us to discuss that in that meeting.
I think we would discuss that. I mean, that's what tonight is for, to try to discuss those.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's the whole, that was the whole, is that we get the final comments, like it says on the agenda, discuss the final comments if we have them ready. And if we need more time, it's just, it's going to put us past the deadline for the end of the year, which, I mean, we can have special meetings. So I would say, is there anything that's ready to be discussed, maybe hashed out this evening? Or no?
I have given you almost all my comments that I could possibly have. I recognize that there are a couple items that are not going to make it in this revision. So I'm not going to, I'm going to take the good for the little bit of bad that I have to accept in this. And hopefully that we can work on this. Remember, this document can be changed every meeting if we want to. If we voted it in and said to Jay, upload this change, well, because we're hoping to have some-- No, no, but I'm saying legally, we could. Every time we do it--
Would you feel comfortable emailing them to me? I mean, if the changes are quite small, I mean, if you email them to me, I can send them out to everybody. We email them to everybody.
Well, is that workable for all of us? Could we all say, we're going to send an email? I don't think we're out of the bounds of legality, are we?
And I think that, I mean, we could even have a lunch special work session on the computer at lunch if there's not many.
Chairman pays for the lunch, right?
Well, I'm saying we just work through lunch.
We could, actually, we could do a Zoom, a lunchtime Zoom.
No, and I don't do Zooms.
Oh, well.
I'm happy to do a lunch, I mean--
Oh, Linda doesn't either.
Well, you two can go sit in Jay's office and he'll run the Zoom and you can--
Well, people work too. So I understand that you can't get down here for lunchtime, that's fine. I suggested that in case you wanted to meet virtually, if you don't-- Okay.
Well, I'm going to extend that to everybody. Everybody would this week.
And if you just send them to me, I'll make sure everybody got some. So I guess with that--
I would just say, make sure you send them to Jay and let Jay send them out so that we're not having a meeting by--
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was trying--
You send them to me and I'll distribute them just like it's a working document that we're all reviewing. And we'll try to reduce any back and forth on that email so that, as Attorney Sullivan mentioned, it's not considered a meeting over email. So and then if we want to schedule, if we determine, I'll speak with the chairman, determine whether or not we want to have a public hearing, a work session, official meeting one night before our next meeting to kind of sort out, make sure everyone's in agreement on--
It's getting really busy with the holidays and everything coming up, but I would love for us to do it one more time so we can go away saying we've done as much as we could possibly do. That's true. Like, I do know that my big, one of my big issues that we're not getting to wholeheartedly is affordable ADUs. And it's not going to happen because, not really even because of us, because the state is in the midst of making changes. So that's not going to appear in our updated zoning. I hope that it'll be the first project we work on after the first of the year when we can, when they come back and start voting on stuff.
So what are you saying?
I'm just saying, for me, that's something that I know, that is not-- It's going to be what's there. Right, it's going to be there. What's there now is what the state wants, likes or whatever, but it's not going to be enhanced the way I would like it to be.
And what was your question, Commissioner Petzschel? And so we've added a workforce housing regulation that allows for work, someone to apply for workforce housing here in Stratford. And we've crafted it in a way that if it changes a little bit at the state, our regulation essentially changes-- our regulation essentially changes with it. Now, I was at a workshop and we discussed workforce housing with the Department of Housing. And I asked, you know, what's the likelihood of this program, workforce housing? It's called Build for CT. What's the likelihood of it being funded in the next fiscal cycle? He said, I don't know. It's, I mean, so this could be gone next year. And we just, you know, we don't know. And so we've written it in a way that if it's still there, we're going to be able to use it because why not? We should be able to use it. And so I hope that answered your question.
Yes.
Yeah. It is, there is a workforce housing provision in there. And so one last thing that I wanted to add is that we did have a work session, both the chairman and I attended the Stratford Housing Partnership Meeting. They were curious to know what changes we have made and where we were at with the accessory dwelling unit regulation. And so we got a lot of feedback from, well, I wouldn't say a lot. There was a lot of discussion. And I would say that one of the, they were curious as to whether or not we were going to be, you all were going to be including attached or detached ADUs. And I think that they were kind of split. I don't want to characterize how they were. I'll let Mr. Chairman characterize.
Honestly, if I look back on three years ago when I attended their first meeting and the meeting we had this past week, they've come a long way. So they weren't saying no to us with what we had planned in the way that we've set things up in terms of the ADU attached and non-attached issue. Or even in terms of some of the other things. They had come a long way to accepting what we were proposing to them versus, you know, a year and a half ago when they were like, there were people on the committee that was like, no, we don't want this at all. I didn't hear that. So I think that we have educated them over the last two years in terms... So I felt like they were, I don't know if happy is the right word, but they were pleased that we had given it so much consideration.
And I think they gave us some additional, there was some additional feedback that no one had thought about that regardless of whether we're doing attached or detached, should have to be in this regulation. Like, if the property is owned by an LLC or an incorporation or corporation, you know, there's no person behind that. And part of our regulation is, someone has to live there. And so this, you know, we're including a revision to make sure that, what does it say? If owned by an LLC or a corporation or deemed similar entity, the principal of that entity has to reside there. You know, a representative, someone representing that has to live there. And so that was something that we had never really thought about, which I thought was a good idea. And so they're going to give us, they're considering giving us some revised comments that if we do get that, I'll just pass it along to you. A revised recommendation letter.
And you don't know what is happening with planning yet?
They are meeting on November nineteenth. November nineteenth. They're going to meet to discuss the consistency of this document, hopefully, with the Plan of Conservation and Development.
Six days after we meet.
That's six days. But that's why we're leaving it open in November so that we can get that document, discuss it, if there are any recommendations, and have them modified for the December adoption, hopefully.
Should it meet now, what, the nineteenth?
They're meeting November nineteenth.
And we're meeting November thirteenth.
We're meeting November thirteenth. But we have another meeting after that, after the nineteenth, to consider those... Public hearing. Yep, everything will be public hearing going forward to the end. So what I'm hoping is that there's an instruction for me to...
Send us a new calendar?
Get some recommendations for you, send them out to the commission. And then for me to prepare, maybe have a special meeting, we'll discuss that.
Jay, could you set up a mini calendar of all these dates?
Yep.
And include a special meeting to be determined? Or that we'll decide whether we need it or not, but put it in the calendar?
Set up special meeting. So it doesn't have to go in the paper, it doesn't have to go in the paper. Every agenda goes on the website and the town clerk's office, so...
And the mayor's newsletter.
Well, it's not a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
The special meeting is just to get consensus beforehand, hopefully. We may not get to consensus, I don't know. But hopefully we get to consensus, we agree on some of the modifications. So like, when it's a public hearing, we're not changing a lot of things on the fly, which is very difficult to do.
Okay.
So I will... Correct, November thirteenth. And I'm going to send something out so that if you have constituents that come and ask you all questions, you'll have a rough timeline of who can speak, who can speak when. And, you know, it'll be fluid because we never know what's going to happen. But the idea is that public comment in November, the majority of the public comment will happen at the November meeting. Maybe some in December, too. So I will set up, I will consider setting up some time for a special meeting to discuss last changes. I will send out Len's comments. And then I would like instruction to start preparing the adoption documents to get on the agenda for November and hopefully adoption in December.
And you'll send us a mini calendar of November and December?
Yep, send calendar, yep. Send calendar.
Can I hear from each member? Do you have anything specific in mind yet, Ewald, that you would like to bring up as a subject? Debra? Linda? You do? Okay. Len, I know you have one. Okay.
So now, maybe not right now, I was hoping for tonight. So that, because I'm meeting with Robert tomorrow to put together all the final documents. If we don't have them, I can't put together the document for the agenda. So we need them right away. Would be preferred.
Well... We're running out of consulting time. So, Lenny, if you could, when you wake up in the morning with your coffee, if you could send him three things that you're thinking of. Len, if you could do the same, then we know that we've gotten at least a basis to you. And hopefully it'll be before Robert gets here and you can have something to go by.
Yep. So, and so that we can put together those changes. So it sounds like we may have to have a special meeting to now discuss these items before I can put together the document. You could always just change the method of meeting. I mean, as long as we're not doing twenty, thirty changes?
Well, then, send it in so he can get it onto the schedule, onto the calendar. Okay. And that's going to be our five items so far, unless you guys come up with something else.
Same with everybody. If you have them, send it to me as soon as you can. Preferably tomorrow because I'll be working on this tomorrow. And so maybe a vote in order to tell me to start preparing the documents and application for adoption.
I move we empower Jay to create the calendar, to book the additional dates for us, to work with us on our questions, and that we, is that enough?
Prepare the application.
That we get, we prepare the application for adoption.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. How's that?
About it outside of the hearing? But if you want, email me that question and I can respond. Can I, and I can respond to the whole group.
They...
Technical question.
They clearly state that in their documents. Go back and read their documents because they say what their plans are.
Email it to me and then I can respond to everybody. We just have to adjourn.
No, I'd like Lenny to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry.